We need a motion to allow Ms. Crawford to participate and vote virtually.
I have a motion, I'll second it.
We have a motion by Ms. Sandy Gilyard and a second by Mr. David Buckles. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 5-0. Now we'll have two presentations by Wayne Hogan. The first will be the Juul litigation presentation and the second, the opioid litigation presentation. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you very much. I appreciate very much the courtesy of the board and Superintendent Surrancey and Mr. Taylor in having us here today. Could I just mention, I think on our end, we were having a little trouble hearing. Are you able to hear me clearly?
Yes.
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 Well, thank you again. I have, it's a pleasure for me to appear before the Putnam County School Board. I have a history with my affiliation with Putnam County in the sense that I graduated from St. John's River Junior College in 1967 when Dean C. L. Overterf was not only dean, but also acting president and our debate coach. And he did so well at that that our only real major competition around the state of Florida was Miami Dade Junior College. So thanks for accommodating us today and also thanks to the superintendent for his leadership in the Northeast Florida Education Consortium where we will be making a presentation at a later time. In this instance, where we are talking about initially opioids, the Chicago Public Schools filed a complaint, a charging instrument in the multi-district litigation panel in Cleveland, Ohio, on behalf of that school system and as a class representative for school districts all across the country. Our group was contacted by Chicago Public Schools to file that. And in addition to that, now there are some 60 other school districts from multiple states who are involved in seeking recovery for expenses that have been incurred as a result of opioid epidemic. We then learned that Miami Dade, represented by Mr. Federico, who is here, Mr. Surras, was pursuing a claim for that school system. And we were able to come together jointly to deal with not just opioids, which I will get into in some detail, but also with respect to vaping or Juul, as the school district there has had plenty of experience with in recent times. So we're dealing with two issues of national importance. Two drugs, one opioid, the other nicotine, both of which addict and hurt people. But as it happens, both of which cost schools all across the country billions of dollars nationwide. So I've mentioned Mr. Federico, who you can see there, and Mr. Surras, who is on with us today, and Amy Goldberg with the Romano Law Firm from West Palm Beach. I've known John Romano since we were both presidents of the Academy of Florida Trial Lawyers and his son, Eric, is presently president of that organization. My purpose specifically here today now is to talk with you about what is called NAS or NOWS. That stands for Neonatal Abstinence Syndrome. And then the federal government uses the term NOWS, which is Neonatal Opioid Withdrawal Syndrome. These are children who were born afflicted with the effect of their mother having been addicted and on opioids at the time of their birth. Mr. Surras has a PowerPoint. I'm not sure if we are set up to go forward with that. Could I ask, Brent, do you know whether you can operate it on this system?
I believe I can. Can you pull that up right now?
Yes, if you can do that. Now...
Presentation?
That's the beginning of it. And as you can see, it talks about billions in special education expenditures as a result of opioids. Now, this next slide is the cover sheet of the charging instrument, the complaint that was filed by the Chicago Public School District in the multi-district litigation panel, a class action complaint, but also seeking individual damages against a long list of manufacturers and wholesalers and distributors and marketers of opioids. The next slide is taken from that complaint and describes the legal causes of action that have been made at that time in the multi-district litigation panel in the complaint. And those include racketeering, Rico against these companies, and public nuisance. Public nuisance is the, was the topic of the actual trial that went to judgment in Oklahoma because the epidemic was so large that it imposed itself on public authorities of one sort or another, whether it was the state or whether it were municipalities all around the country and in what we'll be talking with you today about, and that is our schools. In addition, the action was filed under the Illinois Consumer Fraud and Deceptive Business Practices Act and for negligence, breaches of the standard of care, and the failure to warn of what had happened. Now, the next slide is an indication of the signing on of that complaint by myself and my co-counsel, Cyrus Mary, whose office is in Washington DC, Neil Hendrickson, whose office is in Jacksonville, but also in Washington DC, and Matthew Peers in Chicago. And it was Mr. Peers who the Chicago Public School System first got in touch with. The next slide, we'll talk about why it is important for the schools to take action. What I'd like to go through is the fact that the children exposed to opioid, prenatal exposure to opioids then have to be weaned from these drugs. The result is that those children have very often significant needs for special education services, and that is provided by school systems all across the country as a result of the federal mandate to provide special education services under the IDEA Act. And so this is a nationwide problem caused as the result of the fact that these opioid manufacturers and distributors and wholesalers decided that they would misrepresent these opioids as non-addictive. And the result was they began to be used all across the nation as a means of dealing with chronic pain, something that they were never originally intended to do. And in the end, it was public institutions like cities, like the states, and in this instance, schools, that have borne the brunt of the cost to deal with these circumstances. This is something which is not well-known to schools, and there's a reason. As you know, a child's medical records are private. There is confidentiality surrounding those. So the school system, all it knows really is that it is obligated to provide special education services to children who need them from the time they begin school until they complete their education, whether they leave school early or whether they complete all the way through 12th grade and in some instances after. So in this instance, the school's expenses are substantial, but the schools had no way to know until Chicago Public Schools looked into the research as to how we might go about proving that. Now, the next slide will raise the question of, if we filed a class action complaint in the Chicago case in the multi-district litigation panel, why doesn't that take care of it? Because you may know that class representatives then represent the entire class, which in the instance of the United States would be 13,000 school districts. Well, we have sought that relief and the ability to represent the individual school districts, but the judge in that case has not ruled on that class motion. Secondly, there are some of these companies that have filed for bankruptcy protection. One of them is a company called Purdue Pharma. Purdue Pharma filed in bankruptcy before our case was filed in Cleveland. And the result is that we are seeking class representation in that bankruptcy. Those are not favored in bankruptcy, but we are seeking them, but the judge has not ruled on that topic. So it is important for individual school districts to take action on their own behalf to protect their own interests. And the next slide raises the question of, is it timely to do that? The Purdue bankruptcy already had what is called a bar date, meaning that school districts that filed by that time are individually involved as creditors in the Purdue bankruptcy. We believe that the notice that was given to school districts across the country was insufficient. You may have seen television advertisements. There was an actor, Hector Alizondo, was on those ads. And the ads that were done were intended to let people know about the potential for pursuing claims in the Purdue bankruptcy, but those all seemed to be about individual claims. There was nothing to notify school systems of this problem that they are facing. So we expect that there will be late filings made by school districts who are willing to be represented. Also, there are deadlines that are looming. A different company called Mallinckrodt, a German-based company, but its American affiliate has also filed in the bankruptcy court. We expect that there will be a date coming up, a bar date, which school systems can meet in order to attempt to make their recovery. And what kind of recovery is reflected in the discussion that I'll make on this next And that is the individual school district expenditures. The experts that we have consulted, who have made a career of studying special education, pediatrician Dr. Jasworth, and statisticians have looked at the question of the amount of special education services, expenses that school districts have incurred across the country. It is more than $125 billion that the schools across the country have incurred as a result of doing that. Now, how is it that we're going to go about proving individual school districts expenditures? It is important to realize that it is the national data and the expertise applied to that national data that helps us reach the conclusion as to the impact on school systems. Because since an individual school system does not know and cannot know the circumstances of why any individual child is, needs special education services, the statistics enable us, through the work that these experts have done, to be able to say on a proportional basis or a percentage basis, over this past decade and a half of the opioid epidemic, the students and the expense that any individual school system, including Putnam County, would have gone through because some percentage, as identified by the experts, of the students that received special education assistance throughout that time are the children who are suffering from Neonatal Abstinence Syndrome or, as it's called, Neonatal Opioid Withdrawal Syndrome. So we are in a position to do that. I can tell you that in the mid-1990s, I and another, a large number of other Florida lawyers and other law firms represented the state of Florida against the cigarette industry. The way that we went about putting together the proof plan about the damages that were sustained was by applying statistical analysis to the data that came in through the Medicaid program. This is very much the same sort of thing, but we're 20-plus years later, and the result is it is much more sophisticated than we were able to use then in our action against the cigarette industry. The next slide goes to a question of other expenses that the Putnam County School District may have sustained. We know that Putnam has sustained expenses over this decade and a half and going into the future for special education. But if the school system, and I can ask, or maybe when we get to questions, we can cover that, if the school system is self-insured for workers' compensation and/or self-insured for health care provided to the school system's employees, then those expenses also can be the result of the opioid epidemic, and it is information along those lines that we will need. Some school systems are not self-insured many, and they have insurance for their employees, health insurance, and they also have workers' compensation insurance. In that instance, the school system is paying premiums for each kind of insurance that they're supplying for their employees. And to the extent that those premiums are increased as a result of the opioid epidemic, we would be able to claim those damages as well. And so we are, the reason I mention that, and it is important, is that we are proposing to represent the district on a contingency basis, meaning if we are successful, then we would recover a fee as a result of doing that. The district would not be paying us on an hourly or on a retainer basis. And so the only work of any meaningful type that the district and its staff would be put to is to help us understand the health insurance and the workers' compensation insurance expense that the district has incurred over these years. That's really about the only question that we need answered because the rest we can do with the statistics. And then finally, on the topic of opioids, this is really about what I call the power of numbers. Meaning, we presently represent some of the largest school districts in the nation, Chicago Public School District, Miami Dade's Public School District. But we also represent school districts in West Virginia and Kentucky, two states who were terribly hit by this opioid epidemic. But we also know that many other districts, especially I'd say smaller districts around the country, including Putnam, and those who are part of the consortium, have experienced this. And the larger the number of school districts that we can represent in this situation, the greater the likelihood that the court will grant class action status. But if not, each of those districts will have acted on their own behalf to protect themselves. And so we wanted to, I especially wanted to see that Putnam County had the opportunity to be the leader among the smaller counties in Florida to try to recover these expenses that have been incurred as a result of the opioid epidemic. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have now or if we could go into Mr. Federico's presentation with regard to vaping and specifically Juul. One thing about this, as you can tell from what I just said, opioids were something that the school system was dealing with but didn't necessarily know it. The school system knows it's dealing with vaping and Juul, but it is a highly complex issue, and it is earlier in that litigation. And that's why Mr. Federico has been a leader across the country on that topic, and I'm glad that we've been able to join together with him and his firm in this representation. Madam Chairman, should I ask whether you want to do questions now or would you prefer to wait?
I think we could go ahead and have the next presentation, and then we'll ask questions.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Federico? Thank you, Wayne. It's very nice to meet you all, even though it is virtually. We're all starting to get used to this. Hopefully, we can get back to face-to-face meetings pretty soon. And the reason I mention that is COVID has been a real challenge to school districts around the country. I've presented to many, many school districts from various parts of the country, and everybody's dealing with COVID. I want to thank you for making time for us during a time where things are difficult for you all. Now, I want to talk with you a little bit about Juul and the vaping epidemic, and if we could go to the next slide. This vaping device is a vaping device that really has come to focus on teenagers and high school students around the country. And I'm going to give you sort of an overview of the evolution of Juul, the strategy that went into creating the device, marketing the device, and actually putting it in the hands of millions of individuals under the age of 18. The Juul manufacturer of e-cigarettes controls three-quarters of the market. And that is why the lawsuit is focused, that's one of the reasons, that this lawsuit is focused on Juul and Juul exclusively as opposed to any other e-cigarette manufacturers because they represent three-quarters, maybe now even more, of the market. And let's go to the next slide, and we can talk a little bit about the amount of vaping that's going on. And I first want to show you this graph because what this graph does, Wayne was involved in the tobacco litigation, and the tobacco litigation, as you all will recall, resulted in significant marketing changes. It used to be that there were cigarette ads on TVs, there were billboards, there were celebrities and athletes hulking cigarettes. And now, there's certainly no advertising whatsoever, and when you buy a pack of cigarettes, if you turn it over, it says that these things can kill you. And that is what's called abatement. That was part of the abatement process. How do we be transparent with people, truthful with people, and not try to get them addicted on nicotine? And as a result of the tobacco litigation, in 1997, one out of every three high school seniors was smoking cigarettes. And I suspect it was probably a little higher before that. But based on the tobacco litigation and the abatement associated with it, that number was driven down to 7.6 in 2018. And for school boards who are charged with the responsibility of protecting the students, that's a really good statistic. And the tobacco litigation really solved the cigarette problem as it relates to high school students. If we could go to, if you look at the vaping portion of this slide, which is in the rust color, vaping started with Juul in about 2015, and the numbers have gone up dramatically. In 2018, it has 26.7% of seniors. Current, this is three years later, 2021, we believe, and the statistics are coming back showing over one-third of all high school students are now vaping. So if we could go to the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about, this device is being used in middle school and throughout high school. And you can see with the passage of time, in 2017, 18, 19, this is an elevator going up, okay? And we don't know where the top floor is at this point, but we do know that this litigation is going to stop this elevator from going up and actually hopefully take it to the ground floor once we're finished with the litigation. But you look at these numbers, and again, it's really dramatic. If we could go to the next slide, please. So here now we are in 2021, and 55 million people are now vaping, and most of them are using the Juul device. And I would point out on the left side of this particular slide, if you look at the device itself, it looks like a thumb drive that you would use in a computer. It's easy to hold in your hand, it's easy to conceal, it was designed purposefully for that. They knew when they designed this product that they were going to be targeting young adults and high school students. And the other thing that they knew was that these pods, and you look at the pods that they insert, again, the design is attractive to teenagers. The pods themselves came in flavors like bubble gum and cotton candy. It was almost like going to Baskin Robbins. And so it was a very purposeful creation and marketing of this device. We'll go to the next slide, talk real quickly about, so it started in 2015, and smoking was way down amongst young adults at that point in time. And again, this is a photograph of a typical high school student using a vaping device on school property. And you all, I'm sure, have had no end of difficulty trying to prevent your students from using this device, which frankly, can be used, it's not like trying to smoke a cigarette. You put a cigarette in your mouth and you're smoking, it's very obvious. You light a cigarette, you smell it, you hear it, very obvious. This device is used, these kids, put them in their hoodies, and they turn their head and they take a puff right in the middle of a classroom. It's a horrible problem and difficult to police. If we go to the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about on the next slide, the marketing. Here's the Juul campaign when it was launched. The model is wearing a varsity jacket, which is recognizable by most high school students. And the model is made to look like a high school student. And they clearly, the documents we're now getting from Discovery clearly indicate that their marketing was aimed at young audiences. We go to the next slide. Some of the documents that we've got now from Discovery in the lawsuit indicate that they were advertising on the Cartoon Network, on Nickelodeon, various educational sites for middle schoolers and high schoolers, and certainly Seventeen Magazine, which clearly is targeted towards the young women who are attending high school. So their target audience was below the age of 18, which makes it such a strong lawsuit from our perspective. If we could go to the next slide... If we could go to the next slide. One of the things they did in addition to targeting young adults, or really not even adults, but I would say youngsters, was they went back and they recycled a lot of the cigarette marketing that they had used. And this is a good example of a Newport ad back in the day, and how they used this kind of marketing technique to help, you know, really infiltrate the under-18 market. And they did that with cigarettes. And the reason they did it with cigarettes, as Wayne was saying, you know, this nicotine is incredibly addictive. And if you get them hooked in high school, you know, then you have them for life, unfortunately. If we could go to the next slide. So they started in 2015, and there've been very few products on the market that have grown as quickly as Juul. I mean, it's mind-boggling. The first year out there, their sales were up 700%. By 2017, their revenues are at $200 million. By 2018, their revenues are at $1 billion. And they obviously get the attention of Altria, which is the parent company of Philip Morris, who owns Marlboro. So now the tobacco industry is all in, having paid $12.8 billion for a 35% stake in Juul. By 2019, Juul's revenues rose to $3.4 billion, and at this point, it's, the revenues are believed to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $5 billion. And the company, which was founded in LA, has relocated to Washington DC for lobbying purposes. If we go to the next slide. So I want to talk a little bit about the health effects. In the Juul device, something unique to Juul are the acidified nicotine salts. And these acidified nicotine salts make it much easier for the person to actually inhale the nicotine. And it delivers five times the nicotine of a normal per puff from cigarettes. And obviously, the greater the concentration of nicotine, the more addictive it becomes, and also the more harmful it is. You know, we know nicotine is a toxic substance, we know it raises blood pressure, we know it spikes adrenaline, we know it causes cardiac disease. Really, what it causes more than anything else is chronic lung disease, such as asthma and emphysema. So the adolescents that are now using Juul are, according to the research that's been done, are four to five times more likely to go on to smoke cigarettes. So Juul is taking all the progress we made, you know, getting it from a third of high school students down to 7%, and is taking us right back up to one-third, sometimes more of the students. If we could go to the next slide. And this simply depicts, these pods are the equivalent, one pod is the equivalent of 20 to 40 cigarettes. And it's not uncommon for the young adult to go through, certainly a pod a day, but sometimes two or more. Next slide. So I want to talk to you all a little bit about the damages that you all have suffered as a school board, and school boards across the country. So with children in school using these devices, and Juul receiving enormous profits as a result, school boards have really had to deal with the cost of really collateral problems associated with Juul. And I guess the first place it really starts is when you look at preventing the kids from using the device, you know, it's so easy to hide the device, that short of searching every kid's bookbag, and every kid's, you know, pockets of everything they're wearing, it's almost impossible to really find the device prospectively. And then because it's so easy to utilize in a surreptitious manner, that it's hard to police even the using of the device, sometimes even in plain view. So this litigation is going to provide a means for really two things. One is to recover the cost that has been sustained by school boards and other public entities. And the other thing is, it's going to require a, or it's going to provide really, a path for abatement. If we could go to the next slide. So obviously, school suspensions around the country have been up dramatically. Those are just for the kids you catch. You're only catching a small percentage of the kids who are really using the device on school property during school hours. But you think about these school suspensions and the impact it has, how many people who, administrators and teachers, how many people spend how much time on a regular basis dealing with school suspensions related to Juul? How many administrators, how many teachers, how many security personnel spend time trying to catch these students using the Juul device? The law enforcement costs, the security costs are up, a lot of schools have put cameras in to try and help, and we have a whole matrix of out-of-pocket costs that we are putting together based on the experience of various school boards from around the country. And a lot of what you would do to try and combat this problem, you can't do because you simply don't have the resources. So that's really the economic damages. Talking about abatement, much like the opioid litigation, this isn't going to go away, you know, the day the case is settled. I mean, we've got, you know, a number of young adults and high school students who are, you know, addicted to nicotine as a result of Juul. So there's going to have to be an abatement plan put into place. We're actually working on that, the framework of that now in the litigation. And what it's going to be, it's going to involve education, it's going to involve counseling, it's going to involve what we can do to discourage high school students from using Juul down the road, and really, how can we better attack this epidemic that really is clearly entrenched in high schools in every state? So the abatement program, you know, will start, but much like any abatement program, it's going to take years to get us, you know, down into the single digits in terms of usage. We could slip to the next slide. So the strategy for success for you all, much like the opioid litigation, this is a public nuisance lawsuit with RICO violations and deceptive trade practices. The case can be filed in three courts, but primarily, most cases are filed in the federal district court, or they're removed to that court, because that is the sort of the repository, if you will, for all these lawsuits nationally, as they have been consolidated for economic purposes. I want to get to the applicant team, our group of lawyers working on Juul. And our team has a lot of experience in mass tour litigation, and let me get to the specifics, if you can get me to the next slide. So at Chupor Federico in Staten, we've handled a number of class action mass tour cases. In the opioid litigation that Wayne was referring to, we represent more counties and cities than any other group of attorneys in Florida. And our most recent result was actually in a groundwater contamination case that we settled a couple months ago for $205 million. So certainly, we are, we represented in that case a class that was in the neighborhood of 7,000 people. So we are clearly equipped, both in terms of personnel and financially, because we front all the expenses, we're equipped and prepared to appropriately represent all our clients in mass tours. If we could go to the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about the Romana Law Group. I've known John and Eric now for about 20 years. We've worked on cases together. John is the past president of what is now known as FJA, it's the trial lawyers for the whole state, and his son Eric is currently the president of that organization as well. We couldn't ask for a better partner, not only in opioids, but in Juul, in the Juul litigation. There's not a county I've been to in Florida, and I haven't been to all 66, but I've been to most of them, certainly many of them, where these people are not known and respected in the legal community. If we could go to the next slide, I want to talk a little about Kaldoon Baghdadi, who's not from Florida, to the contrary, he's from San Francisco. And he is an essential part of our team in the Juul litigation. The multi-district litigation, where all the lawsuits are filed, is in the Northern District of California, and he holds the position of what's called liaison counsel. And he is the only person who communicates between the trial judge, who's the most important person in the litigation, and the plaintiff's executive committee, which is the leadership committee for all plaintiffs in the Juul litigation. Kaldoon very frequently knows what's going on before anybody else does, he's an invaluable resource, he's an exceptional attorney, and we're lucky to have him. If we could go to the next slide. Similarly, we are working with a gentleman by the name of John Fisk. John is co-lead counsel in the state version of the Juul litigation in California. As I said before, because Juul was originally located in Los Angeles, we were able to file a case in Los Angeles as well. And John is, as I say, co-lead counsel there. These two lawsuits are running sort of simultaneously, and we're sharing a lot of information. And John's a very important, especially as a member and a partner in the law firm of Baron and Bud, which is one of the more prestigious mass tour firms in the country. He's used to representing public entities, and did so most recently, as you can see here from the slide, in California. Go to our next slide. And we don't have a slide for Wayne, because Wayne already spoke, but Wayne, is there anything you want to add with regard to yourself or this litigation?
Well, I think I've made it plain, each of the firms that are, that I mentioned that are signed on to the multi-district panel complaint in Cleveland have the same sort of experience as Phil described for you. And perhaps from my end, the one that most applies to this situation is our work on the half the state of Florida against the cigarette industry. One other one to mention that is not well-known, but is active presently, is my partner Evan Yegelwell, represents families who were victims of the 9/11 terrorist attack, and is presently pursuing and has a judgment against Iran, and against, and is pursuing claims against the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia for facilitating those terrorists. So this is our experience, this is our background. And I just would mention one other thing, and that is, when Phil talks about abatement, abatement is what the judges in these cases are focused on. The damages are almost so great that as to be uncertain as to how to fully calculate them. And so the judges, we've heard this both in the bankruptcy and in the MDL, are focused on what can we do in the future with the money that we will get, that the plaintiffs hope to get from these defendants in order to cure the problem. And in the instance of schools, especially in special education, to go back to the topic that I started with, there is no one in the United States more able, by experience, to abate the problems created by opioid in schools who provide special education over a period of A through 12. Thank you, Phil, for asking.
Sure, sure. So getting back to Juul, so really, what are the next steps for school boards, and your school board in particular? And really, this is an opportunity to get involved in the litigation early on. It is always preferable to get involved in a mass tour early on, because certainly you don't want to miss deadlines. And when it comes to allocation at the end, one of the factors that certainly is commonly looked at is, when did each plaintiff in the case get involved, and what sort of contribution did they make to the ultimate resolution? So being in the front of the lines is much better than being in the middle of the back of the line. And here, there's very, there's really no risk to the school board. You know, just like the opioid litigation, we work on a contingency fee basis, so you don't owe us anything unless we're successful. And we advance all the costs. And if we're unsuccessful, those costs, you don't owe us that, that doesn't need to be reimbursed, it's a risk we take for doing this, this kind of litigation. There is a minimal investment of time. After we file the lawsuit, there's something called the plaintiff's fact sheet, which takes the place of Discovery, and by that I mean depositions and document production, et cetera, et cetera. It is a fact sheet that takes us on average eight to 10 hours to complete. We're able to do most of it, but we do need some help from the individual school boards in getting all the information for the plaintiff's fact sheet. And we have a 90-day window to get it done, so it really is not a heavy lift at all, by any stretch of the imagination. What do you have to benefit? Well, there's going to be a substantial recovery in this case. I mean, in terms of the merits of the case, we know from the research out there, from the experts that we've engaged, you know, this couldn't be a stronger case, frankly, from our perspective. In terms of the inappropriate marketing, and in terms of the misrepresentations, they were hawking Juul as a safe alternative to cigarettes, and it's just the opposite. So we are very comfortable with the fact that this case will ultimately resolve, in all likelihood by way of a settlement. Probably, right now, we're looking at our first trials scheduled for the spring of 2022, which means we'll probably be talking settlement starting late summer, early fall. So getting involved sooner is certainly preferable. If you were to hire us as counsel, we would file the lawsuit promptly. You would have a leadership role, because members of our team are in leadership. At the end of this case, when, you know, major decisions are being made as we go down the road, and certainly at the end, when allocation and abatement are being discussed and decided, you're going to want leaders in the room, people who are leaders in the litigation, and not all lawyers are in the room, you can only have so many in there. And certainly on our team, between John Fisk, Kaldoon, and myself, you know, you're going to have more than adequate representation in that regard. If we could go to the next slide. So these are things we can send you to look at, if you're interested. Obviously, the PowerPoint today we can send you, we have a draft complaint we can send you, a memorandum of law that discusses in greater depth the litigation, some pleadings that have been filed, and our sample agreement of retainer. So we're happy to send you any of those, any and all of those documents, if you're interested. Next, just questions, we're back to questions. So thank you for your patience, and Wayne, I'll turn it over to you, we're happy to answer any and all questions.
Thank you, Phil. And to the chair or superintendent, Lex, any questions that you might have for us? We'd be glad.
Madam Chair, we have met with them before, we've heard their presentation, but we want you to be able to ask questions if you have any.
Rick, I've got a question. Well, Sandy, you want to go first?
My concern is, or my question, that is, the information that we would have to gather to present to them, and then where does confidentiality come in, and the proof that this did impact our district in a negative way, et cetera, et cetera? Those would be the questions, and what would be the lead of our attorney? That's what I want to hear.
You want to address that, Lex?
Yeah. We've, we've, these are professional.
We've, we've, these are professional
Litigators.
Law firms that know that those are issues for us. They know that we have state and federal laws that we need to comply with. A lot of the data that they're going to be using is going to be aggregate data, and it's not going to be individual data. I'm not concerned that we're going to have any issues with confidentiality.
Okay.
Lex, Lex, one of my concerns is, first of all, cost, estimated amount of abatement per child in a district like this. I mean, we've been through crack babies for years, and we, you know, we're a high-poverty district, which we're Title I. We've got all this, from poor screens and holes in the windows and refrigerators with bad seals to kids being sick, you know, and it, we get some money for that. I mean, I was under the impression that tobacco industry in about six, 2016, was trying to have vaping rules and regulations set up in the public school. I'm not taking up for big tobacco, but I guess that's irrelevant. You know, the Juul is just a smaller version of the water pipe, which they use to smoke opium, I guess, and in, when the days of the Walt Disney movies first came out with the Follow the Rabbit or whatever it was, Alice in Wonderland. Anyway, you know, what are we talking about here? We've got fentanyl and opium coming across the southern border, you know, every day, and it's, it's, kids don't even know what they're getting. I don't, I mean, they obviously know what they're doing, but as a lawyer with a district, I don't want to see us participate in something that big tobacco will come back and sue and litigate against us at some point.
Wayne, maybe you can touch on that? What's the potential downsides to the district? Can they come back and sue the district?
No, there, yeah, there's, there's no downside from that standpoint. It's one of the reasons that I mentioned that there's strength in numbers among the districts, being involved in pursuing these claims. And the opioid litigation that has gone on already, apart from the schools, as recently as today, you see in the newspaper a settlement made by Nevada with one of these consultants to the industry. Other recoveries are being made by states and municipality cities for the first responder expenses and things along those lines, and Phil and Brent have been involved in that. So the very same thing would apply in, with regard to opioids. The, the statistical approach that I've mentioned is the thing that prevents the school district from being put in a position of having to disclose anything that is confidential about any of the students who would have received the special education. The way we see this plan developing is that we will be able to, and Phil is right, that what happens in most of these kinds of cases, because of their magnitude, is that in the end, it resolves by way of settlement, as opposed to trial. Putnam would not be the first one up there in the trial, of course. We, they, you would be in a situation, if you had a trial, where the focus would be on the larger districts and the larger amounts of money that they would have incurred. But the benefit to, to the smaller counties, whether it be in Florida, or in West Virginia, or Kentucky, is the ability to point out that these problems are very real, and they are being incurred by the, by the school district, which by federal statute, in the instance of opioids and special education, the district is mandated by federal statute to incur these expenses for these children. And it is only right that they be part of the abatement that is likely to come from the litigation. Our, our belief is that this will be a brief fact sheet that an individual county will fill out, that we will then supply to the court, and it, and then the county will go along with the remainder of those. But the advantage is to be early as you can be, because of the potential that you might risk not being included in those who meet, for example, where there's bankruptcies, the bar date. Purdue Pharma is an example. We're going to try to get around that, but right now, any counties that file are going to be limited. But there are, as you saw in the cover sheet of the complaint, twenty or so defendant manufacturers, wholesalers, distributors that were involved in this, and eventually, they're going to come to the table. I can tell you that in the instance of Purdue, we were permitted, even though we came into this late, we were permitted to engage in the mediation that was occurring. I can't disclose anything about that, but we were permitted to do that on behalf of schools.
Things like even big alcohol with fetal alcohol syndrome and things like that. I'm, I'm just telling you, we never got any money for fetal alcohol syndrome kids that I, that I know.
It is, you're correct that it is a similar kind of thing in terms of the impact on the child, but again, because of confidentiality, you can have a child with fetal alcohol syndrome and the very same special education needs, but the district, the district provides the services, but is unable to know about the specifics of the, of the individual child's circumstances. And our, the way that we're going at this, by creating a statistical model based on the best data available, with the best experts in the country, enables us to benefit each of the client school boards when the case resolves.
I remember, if I'm remembering correctly from my notes, it said that if we were to become a part of this, that, and, and say, we recover, you recover some monies for Putnam, you will receive twenty-five percent of whatever is recovered. My question then is to our district. What, what are we going to do with the monies? I, I know exceptionally, have we thought about prevention, education for our parents, people? What are we planning to do?
Be determined. I mean, I think, you know, that would be funds that we would use to just reimburse what we have spent.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
So that, my understanding is we've put that in our general fund, and basically as reimbursement, just to cover past costs.
Rick, it is your recommendation that we, we join with this, is that correct?
Yeah, we've met with them, and, and we asked all the same questions that you ask, especially cost, and those questions were answered, and cost of financial and time, and we were satisfied that, you know, the district would not be at risk in doing this. So we've asked all the same questions that you have.
So they've reached out to you, or some other district, a friend that's a superintendent, shared it with you and said, hey, look into this?
Met with them a couple of months ago through Mr. Douglas and Mr. Taylor. Actually, had connections with them, and so we had a conference call, much like we did now, and then we wanted them to come to the board and present to you.
Actually, Charlie led Students Against Tobacco for years in high schools.
Right.
Okay, all right.
That, that money would be kind of earmarked for special education, though.
And it doesn't mean the state won't take it away out of one hand.
Rhonda, do you have any input on that? I'm, I'm not sure, I can't tell you. Wayne, do you have any, any input on that? I mean, are there any restrictions, or would that just be just money given to the district to use in whatever way we saw fit?
I think that, that's especially, I don't, I don't know exactly how it might work in the instance of Juul, but there, they're talking about preventative mechanisms that you could put in place. But in the instance of opioids, because the federal statute requires you to provide the special education expenses, it provides a level of relief, because it provides you with a school board revenue that you can then help to apply to it. Unknown, unknown to you, you've been doing it for fifteen years for children who are the, the victims of these opioids. You've been providing a special education expenses, but you, and you had to do that out of the money that you had available through the, through the millage. So in this situation, if, the recovery of the funds would be available to you then to supplement your ability to provide a special education to these students, even if it means you're able to add an additional set of teachers, or you're able to provide some additional curriculum. Or it might be that you just do what you do best, which is, of all the entities in the world, provide special education to students who need it.
Ms. Gilliard, most likely, there'll be no earmarks or stipulations on it, and we can decide what we want to do. We won't know until there's either a settlement, or there could theoretically be restrictions on it, but at this point, we wouldn't assume there would be any restrictions. And so it could go to the general fund, offset, offset old expenditures, or be there to provide new.
Prevention.
Yeah, prevention.
I like prevention.
Federico's having some connection difficulties, but the same.
I don't have any more questions.
I don't have any more.
Did he have?
Same for Juul, same for Juul, yes.
Okay, anyone have any further comment?
I think it would have to come up for a vote at another meeting, I believe.
Actually, it's in the consent agenda.
Oh, is it really? Okay, I didn't read that. I see it now, okay.
No one has any further comment. Thank you, all of you, Mr. Hogan and Mr. Federico. Thank you for your presentations.
You're very welcome. Thank you, thank you so much for having us. I appreciate all of the courtesies that you've shown over this period of time. I know you have so many things that you're dealing with as a board, and we really appreciate it, and hope that what we're talking about will be helpful to you as a board on behalf of the folks in Putnam County.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at our public comment. Do we have any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're going to the consent agenda. Ms. Gilliard, do you have anything you would like to pull?
No, ma'am, I am fine, thank you.
Mr. Buckles?
Well, we passed E., which is items approved by the superintendent on emergency powers. Is all that in?
Well, I didn't see an item.
That's in, at the end.
Okay.
It's here.
All right, no, ma'am, I don't have anything to pull.
There's not any previous items, right, but we do have, for discussion input, we have the.
Right.
Okay. And I have none. Mr. McGinnis? And Ms. Crawford?
I had a lot of questions, but I got them all answered, so I have nothing to pull.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as, as presented.
Madam Chair, just as a note, we had an agreement with the attorneys. There's a small modification to the contract agreement. They've agreed to use Florida law instead of Illinois law. I just want to put that on the record, so that you're approving it with the condition that we change it to Florida law.
Okay, should we, should we pull that, or?
You don't need to pull it, I just need to make sure that you know that that's on the record. I've got an agreement with that in writing and email between the attorneys.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Mr. Bud McGinnis to approve the consent agenda as written. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, we are going out of our regular session into emergency sessions, and we have one
Madam Chair, I make a motion that, that we approve the emergency item, twenty twenty-one personnel allocation change number fifteen, fifteen point three to fifteen point four, justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Mr. Bud McGinnis to approve our emergency item personnel allocations change number fifteen, fifteen point three to fifteen point four. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. We are out of emergency session and into, we have no unfinished business, and so we are in new business. Item number one, resolution to grant emergency powers to the superintendent.
Madam Chair, I move that we continue this as long as we are in this state with COVID.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Sandra Gilliard and a second by Mr. David Buckles to approve item oh one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the, all those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Number two, consensus to advertise the recommendation of instructional materials.
Do a roll call vote.
Roll call.
Are you ready? District one?
Advertise.
District two?
Advertise.
District three?
Advertise.
District four?
Advertise.
District five?
Advertise.
Motion carries five zero. We will now have our reports by our board members, the board attorney, and the superintendent. Ms. Crawford, would you like to go first?
I really don't have a whole lot. I've been indisposed as of late, but I am continuing my journey to become healthy again.
Oh, thank you, and we're glad that you're on that journey. It'll be soon, I'm sure.
I hope, because it hurts.
I bet it does, I've been there.
Just don't cry.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Mr. McGinnis?
Well, the Juul presentation, really, to me, was eye-opening, sad for our students that they're getting really bad, bad information, that they are safer than cigarettes, it's the opposite, opposite world again. But it did bring up, it reminded me back when, I think it was, we had the Twenty First Century program, the first phase or second phase, I don't remember what year, maybe it was twenty-ten, program with the University of Florida Agricultural Agent, and it was a program called Health Rocks, where they invited young people, mainly from Interlochen High, that wanted to get ours, and, and they were taught a program over Christmas break to instill with the middle schoolers attending the after-school program about the problems with abuse, substance abuse, how you're addicted to it, and they had a lot of good examples. So maybe, maybe it's time again to get that back in our after-school program, just as a reminder about how important it is, because years, three or four years later, you would see, I would run into young people who would come and testify that that did it for them. That was just like, that made all the difference in the world, that somebody from a high school came and cared enough to share with them all these addiction problems. And it was mainly with drugs and alcohol. That just really, it gleaned on me big time with the Juul. I attended one of the Pedro at Palaca High School baseball games, mainly because my grandson plays for Pedro, and my nephew plays for PHS, so it's always McGinnis versus McGinnis. It's really cool when they're at first base, and it's good. And I've been, I've been completing my e-search surveys, I like them, don't ask why. During the last school board meeting, during public comments, we had a request for information regarding some of the concerns I had made about our, our plan. And I just want to let the board know that I did send that packet to that individual, so they have everything that you got, that you received, and hopefully, everything will be satisfactory. And I encourage all the families and students that are, and congratulate them, that are participating in the fair. It's a lot of work, and it's just, it's, it's fun just to sit and observe how everyone is connected to all this, and the fair's big in our county, I'm glad to see it's back. And I do want to thank the sixth grade class at Melrose Elementary. I went to their egg drop, and I got the nicest thank you notes, and I'm going to respond to each one of them, because they are just so, one of them's origami here that I can't wait to open up, and I haven't had a time to look at them, but they were in my mailbox today, so thank you, Ms. Morgan. today. So, thank you, Ms. Morgan, sixth grade at Melrose Elementary. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. McGinnis? Mr. Buckles?
I just, once again, the, the, the toll on education that has been taken over the years by everything from physical and sexual abuse to fetal alcohol syndrome, crack, now we're looking at opioids and fentanyl and, and the other thing. There's no way to, to calculate the damage that it does, particularly in a community where you have high poverty rates. I mean, it's everywhere. It's in the most wealthy communities. I, I know people that, I mean, we all do, that have horror stories from young people being addicted to some of these drugs that are, they just, they grab you and they, they don't let go. And some kids make it and some don't, and it is a real eye-opener, much less to educate the addicted babies that come to school. And, you know, we know who they are, and, and we have known, and we, you know, we're working with them, and it's, you know, people can say what they want. This is a very caring, wonderful group of people in Putnam County that work with some of the most challenged children, children that we can deal with. I, I, I know it's heartbreaking to, to see some parent that's had a child have an overdose and, and be in the hospital on life support, and still, thankfully, some of them make it, but a lot of them don't, and it is just awful. You know, not even considering the educational toll it takes on our children. And I, my fear is that, you know, you win a bunch of money from whoever, Juul or Big Tobacco again, but I think Big Tobacco will probably be out of this, and it'll be Juul. And then the state will take it away with one hand and give you the money in the other. So I don't, whether that happens or not, it, I, I suppose it's time. This was inevitable and coming anyway. So I, I have enjoyed immensely some of the athletic events, the sports events we're having. I, I look around the, the nation, and I look at the news where kids are not even back in school, and the kids are mounting recall efforts on their governors and things like that. It's, I'm just so thankful that we were able to find a solution and be able to move forward this school year for our children. And, and, you know, even our kids have suffered, but nothing like the ones in the bigger districts around the country. So my hats are just, I, our employees are my heroes. They're just wonderful, but I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Ms. Gillyard?
And I concur what Mr. Buckles said regarding our employees. They're second to none, and I mean that. I, I wouldn't waste my time saying it if I didn't mean it. Just want to give a thumbs up to Mrs. Jennifer Azula and Mr. Jonathan Hinke for the presentations on yesterday. You could very easily have walked in with very little knowledge of what they were talking about, but at the end of it, you understood precisely what, what, where we're headed, our mission, our values, our vision, et cetera, and, and it's just great. And, and I'm happy just to be a part of it. Next thing, thumbs up to our, our school district for offering vaccine shots, sites for, for our employees to, to get, get their shots, because these were troopers that at the beginning of the school year, they were frightened, and they were coming in, and they were, were all but protesting. They feared for, for their own safety and health, but they persevered, and they did it. And, and so the, the sites are there. And so I would encourage all of them that, you know, even if it's against your religion, pray about it and, and consider if at all, if you could have it to go, to go and get it. Next thing I want to mention is, I got a call as I was leaving the boardroom today at about two o'clock, 2:30, from a gentleman, some of you may know him, Mike Cooper. He said, due to limits, and your meeting today, just the facts. I'm James M. Cooper, Palaca High School, class of 1962. I was a U.S. Marine, active duty in the Reserve from '64 to '76 for 12 years. He said, I grew up in Palaca. My folks moved to Palaca in 1956 to work at Hudson Pope and Papenmere, so we know it's way back. He said, I found out about Robert H. Jenkins Award in last week's paper, and he mentioned the Palaca Daily News. He lives in Dallas, Texas, and he subscribes to his hometown newspaper. But his, his dilemma is this. He, he, oh, he quoted everything to me. I, I was blown away with the facts. How many people, how often the Congressional Medal is given out? It's nothing to be taken lightly. And he, he said, for what it's worth, he, he wanted to put his two cents in, in the renaming of Interlock and High. It's been requested by the city, Mr. Lil Granger and wife and others. I see no problem in transferring the name to another school. He just went on to just say how proud he was to be from Palaca, to meet people and to go into places wherein you're looking at the list of the people, he says, oh, like 200 and some in, in Florida that received this medal, and to see somebody from his hometown. And he said, for whatever it's worth, he said, please consider naming that school in honor of this gentleman. And I promised him that I would read it. He even copied the picture of Robert H. Jenkins, and, and he says he let people know, you know, point blank where he's from. He did point out, though, that he wanted the correction of his, the spelling of his name. It's Robert H. Jenkins, and on the plaque is Robert W. Jenkins. But I, I promised him that I would do it, and that's Mr. Mike Cooper. With that, Madam Chair, I'm done.
I, I wanted to say that I pointed that out to the superintendent, Mr. Bowling. Prior to the meeting, I had a call from Tom Walden, who was a longtime military gentleman, who was in, down in South Florida, and he, he was 100% supportive of naming Interlock and High School for Robert H. Jenkins, not Robert W. Jenkins. He said the spelling was wrong as well. Everywhere they go, that it's written as a, as a recipient of the Congressional Medal of Honor, it's, it's Robert H. Jenkins, so.
And he went on to give his spiel about the Marines being the first in there and the first, you know, but anyway, yeah, yeah. But anyway, it, it was great talking to him. I didn't know history.
His sister Allison lives here.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Gillyard. I just, I want to also commend Mrs. Azula and Mr. Hinke for giving just absolute presentations. They were so informative, and as I was driving here, I was thinking about our values, the value words, and as I was riding by the fair, and I thought, wow, there's, there's three of our value words in our kids that are showing tonight. You know, leadership, growth, relationship. I mean, probably all six are represented. And so that, that just kind of tied in together for me. Also, the portrait of the graduate, I think that's an unbelievable document, and it says so much. If we can, if we can accomplish those things, we've, we've done a really great job. I see Dr. Shelby out there, and I had this written down before I saw him. He sends me the radar report. He still includes me in my, my, my family, and I appreciate that. And so I get it on Sunday night, maybe Monday morning. And one thing that kind of tied in with our presentations yesterday and our strategic plan, he mentioned in the radar report all the events, which he does every time, but in the shout-outs, he put, you know, try to attend one of these events and show that you really are about the whole child. And I thought, that is so true. So I just encourage everyone to get out and go to a, a baseball game or a flag football game or, or the fair and watch the, all the different activities.
Softball, volleyball, tennis.
Softball. Oh, and we did start our recreation league in South Putnam. I'm coaching 13 to 15-year-olds. We have four teams in that age group. We have 96 girls involved, and they come to our church, Dr. Shelby, every, every night during the week. We're busy. So that's a really great thing. And I would like to just remind everyone to write on your calendar, April 21st, 9:00 to 4:00 in the boardroom, our master board training. It's 9:00, April 21st. 9:00 to 4:00. And that is all I have. Mr. Attorney?
Charlie asked me to thank you all for letting me come today. Charlie, initially Wayne had opened up to Charlie and requested that you review everything, but we both put a lot of work into it. And at this point, Charlie was worried that you might have some pretty detailed questions and, and that I'd be able to answer them better. But, you know, we, we thank you guys for your attention during the meeting, and, and we are hopeful that'll do some good work here in Putnam County.
Thank you for all that work. I'm Dr. Searcy.
Yeah, I have a couple items. First of all, right after this meeting, I'm going to the livestock show at the fair. Actually, my grandson's showing his pigs, so excited to see that.
Thank you, Chuck.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I've already been. I know what you're talking about. I would like, talking about dates, I would like for you to look at a, a, having a board workshop right before our next board meeting on April 6th, and that is a 6 o'clock meeting, a night meeting, and I would ask that you come at 5:00 PM. And I would like to have a workshop on our grade seven through 12 configuration. And I'm asking our high school principals to be here just to answer questions, you know, some of the advantages of the 7-12 configuration, as well as any challenges or concerns. You know, we want to make sure we answer questions as we go into the next year. So, you know, please be in attendance for that, and I think that will be very helpful for, for you to answer questions that people might have about our new configuration.
Thank you so much, because that's the one holdup that I seem to run into. Everywhere I go, people just, they don't understand that so many school districts around the state are building K-12 schools or, or seven through 12 schools. And, and we, I went to a, to Taylor Pearson the other day, and one of the coaches from the girls' softball team said, if this is an example of a K-12 school, count me in. Because, I mean, but the concerns I get are, how are you going to keep them separated? And I just think that would be a wonderful idea, Mr. Senior.
Yeah, we'll definitely address all those questions and, and, you know, some things that've come up today. We're, we're on the, you know, talking to other districts about athletics. We're going to offer athletics for seventh and eighth graders, so that'd be a great opportunity for those kids.
Wonderful feeder program.
As well as get into the pipeline for our career programs and acceleration programs. So there's a lot of advantages, but I definitely want to answer questions that you're hearing from your constituents as well.
Excellent.
Just want to bring you up to date on our consolidation timeline. And again, I'm not going through everything, but I just want to reassure you that our district is working on a very strict timeline as far as personnel, rezoning, you know, as far as getting everything ready for moving. We're going to be doing an R, actually doing an RFP for a moving service to help move a lot of this stuff from school to school. So there's a lot of moving parts, but we're definitely have, we're on top of it and making sure that we're going to take all the guesswork out. So just want to make sure you understand that. And also, you mentioned the naming. We are, Mr. Bowling is working on forming a naming committee, and again, that will be, you know, following, sir?
Next week.
Yeah, next week. So he'll be entertaining that, and, you know, everything you've talked about, he is definitely on top of, and we'll be bringing that recommendation back to you at a later time. We are, we've hired some consultants on the bond. I think you've already met some of them, but on the bond issue, but we will be, we're working on that. We'll be keeping you abreast of that information. Here's something that's really interesting. I was just handed this by Mr. Bowling, who was handed this by Skeet Alford. This is a baseball from the 1948, conference champs and district champs from Putnam High School, which is the old Mellon School. And if you look, if you looked at the paper today, the little section there where they talk about the history in Putnam County, they actually talk about Mellon High School.
That's the commission parking lot there by the courthouse.
That's it. And that school was built in the, in the 20s, actually, actually, to be honest, 1921, exactly 100 years ago this year. And it was taken out of commission in 1953, when the new school was built where Beasley is now, or, or Seelo. So a lot of rich history here. Actually, my mom graduated in 1948. Not, she went to school there for a little while, but that's the same graduating year of my mom. But I think it's kind of cool, and some of the baseball players at that time signed it. Some of these names you probably know. Charlie Alford.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Jack Tilton. Here's one for you, Joe Hall, former principal at Crescent City High. Ed Reed, Don Cameron, Eddie Matthews. Yeah, a lot of names. I'll keep this up here, but I want to thank Skeet Alford for bringing this to us, and we're actually going to put this on display for people to see. But what a, what a rich piece of history right here.
Rick, you know, I haven't, I haven't forgotten about the lady that came, was, that was looking for the memorabilia from, from the old Palaca Central, and that goes along with South and Mellon and senior high. Whatever we have, we need to try to find out where it is and see if there's a way to, to relocate it somewhere. I know that's, that somebody's got it somewhere. I can't imagine it went to the dumpster, but who knows?
But how neat is that, that we're going through a consolidation process and exactly 100 years after Mellon High School was built?
It is.
That's, that's amazing.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of history. Final thing is, I want to mention that myself and Mikey Helms, who's our, our STEM specialist, will be attending a superintendent's conference in San Antonio, Texas this weekend, and he and I will actually be presenting to an audience on our new artificial intelligence initiative that we're taking on here in Putnam County. And at some point in time, I'd like to present some information to you, but we're actually partnering with the STEM2Hub out of Jacksonville, and also partnering with organization called Woo Works, Monica Woo, who's heading all this up, and also organization called Fuse Machines, which is, Dr. Samir Maskey is a professor at Columbia University. He will actually be teaching our students at QI Roberts, and we will be using teleconferencing equipment to connect to our other high schools, but we'll be teaching college-level classes on artificial intelligence. And that is definitely the career for tomorrow, if you will, and I think our students are very fortunate and blessed to have that opportunity. So Mikey and I are going to be presenting. So again, Putnam County is going to be, have a national audience and hear about some of the great things taking place here. So thank you, and that's all I have today.
Thank you, Dr. Searcy. Anyone have anything else to say? This meeting's adjourned.